Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Yountville Town Council Regular Council Meeting of March 1st, 2011. Before we get into things, I'd just like to remind folks that agenda items and staff reports are on the wall to your right. Please turn off, as I will demonstrate, any mobile phones or non-essential devices. And with that, I'll call this meeting to order, and may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Councilmember Mueller?
Here.
Councilmember Doran Becker?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chilton?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Move on to Item 3, Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please stand and join us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving right along to Item 4, Closed Session Report. We have none, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Item 5, Adoption of the Agenda. Do we have any changes or corrections? If not, is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
I so move to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition. Moving on to Item 6, Public Comment. This is an opportunity for any items that are not listed on tonight's agenda to be heard. Is there anyone in the public that would like to come and speak to anything not on the agenda this evening? This is where, if it's not on the agenda, please come on forward, just in time.
That's what, that's how it should be. My name is Ed Warren. I'm a member of the home in Yountville, and I am the Legislative Chairman and a member of your Rec. Park Commission. I want to thank you all for giving me support for another term. I'll do my best. The activities which probably be most interested in reporting would be after the Allied Council, which is in fact next week. So, I would just tell you that we are in fact carrying three pieces of legislation sponsoring the Allied Council is this year, something called SB 10, which means it was introduced on the very first day that they allowed bills to be introduced, because we've already passed it once with no negative votes, 283 or something like that, to zero. And the governor vetoed, so we're going to do it again this year. And we have a bill to reduce two fee bills, one 488 and 487. One deals with non-veteran spouses being treated just like every other member, and the other one is to set a reasonable cap, not a 300 percent cap increase. So, like you increase your water rates slowly, we believe they should increase our fees more slowly. So, those are three bills, and if there is a way of properly introducing it to a committee or a letter to the Chairman, however you'd prefer to start a process, we can give you the information you need to consider it. So, that's mainly what I would have to say today.
Oh, great. Appreciate you bringing up the updates on those bills, and we'll be in contact. I know often a member of the Town Council is at an Allied Council meeting, and we'll also-
Right, we enjoy that.
-have a conversation about how we can keep updated and show support.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. It looks like we have no other public comment, so move on to Item 7, Consent Calendar. Are there any changes, questions, or a motion?
Mayor Dunbar, I'd like to recuse myself from Consent Calendar Item D due to ownership of real property within 500 feet of the Villa Grande housing development.
Okay. But the record reflect that Councilmember Mueller will be recusing herself from that vote. Are there any other conflicts or questions? Is there a motion to be had on Consent Calendar Items A, B, C, E, and F?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition. Consent Calendar 7D, Resolution 2948-11, is there a motion?
So move to approve.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
With Councilmember Mueller's recusal. Thank you very much. We'll move right along to Presentations. And our first presentation this evening is a proclamation acknowledging March as American Red Cross Month, and I'd like to welcome Mr. and Mrs. Rosensky to be here with us tonight. And Steve Rosensky is a member of the Napa Valley Red Cross Board of Directors, so I would like, if you would meet me at the podium, and I'll bring my glasses with me, so I can, I don't have to ad lib the proclamation, I can actually read it. First of all, welcome. Thank you for being here. This is a proclamation declaring March as American Red Cross Month. Whereas each March, the American Red Cross and its local community chapters are formally recognized for their essential humanitarian role in the cities and counties they serve, and whereas every day, Napa County Red Cross volunteers and employees provide essential services in our community to help those affected by everything from house or apartment fires to floods, earthquakes, and other natural and human-caused disasters, thanks to the generous financial support of people throughout Napa County. Whereas, for more than 93 years, the citizens of all the cities and towns in Napa County have relied on the Red Cross to provide disaster relief, as well as training and life-saving skills and disaster response processes and procedures. And whereas, over the past year, the Napa County Red Cross Disaster Action Team, volunteers who are on-call 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, 365 days a year, responded to 19 local residential fires and helped 39 displaced people with emergency food, clothing, and a warm, dry bed to sleep in. And whereas, over the past year, 4,117 individuals learned life-saving and safety skills, including first aid, CPR, and AED training, and swimming and lifeguarding through 566 classes offered by our chapter. And whereas, the Operation Military Support Committee of the Napa Chapter secured a grant to fund much-needed electronics for therapy programs at the Veterans Home in Yountville, as well as providing toiletries and clothing for the most needy at the facility. And whereas, OMS also conducted an employee resume-writing workshop for returning veterans, held six lunches for military families, allowing them to network with each other and learn about available services, and collected, sorted, and distributed over 1,800 holiday cards to the Veterans Home and residents at the Pathway Home. And whereas, in the fall of 2010, the Napa Chapter began offering a Certified Nursing Assistant Certification Program using the American Red Cross curriculum, providing an opportunity for qualified participants to work in a rewarding career. And whereas, our chapter conducted 32 disaster education presentations for the community to help attendees learn, to prepare to make their families and neighborhoods safer. And whereas, Red Cross volunteers contributed 7,204 hours of service to their chapter, serving as members of the Board of Directors, like yourself, chapter committees, instructors teaching life-saving skills, office helpers, fundraising support, DAT responders to large and small disasters, and much more. I can't believe there's more, but there is.
There is.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that I, John Dunbar, Mayor of the town of Yountville, do hereby proclaim March 2011 as American Red Cross Month. Especially during this extraordinary time for our country, we encourage all Nappans to support the Napa County Chapter of the American Red Cross in its noble humanitarian mission.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Just want to say a few words. This really covered and described just about everything we do, and we really do all this. There's one thing it didn't mention, and I wanted to mention it because I've just had a personal experience with something new that we're doing that really proved very poignant for the person doing it, and those of us that participated in it, myself and the Executive Director. We've been asked by the Library of Congress to spearhead this Veterans History project. And what we do is identify the veterans of all wars, obviously. Some of the wars, there's not too many veterans left anymore, but just had a wonderful occasion to meet with a person I knew, an actual WWII war hero, who had such a difficult time in the war with what he did and what he saw around him, could not talk about it, even with his family, his entire life. And then, since he's 90 years old now, decided it was time to get it out. And I had kind of heard the story and went to his family and said, hey, do you think he'd like to do it? And he did, and it was a catharsis for him, it was just a wonderful thing, and every time he sees me, he hugs me, he says, oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I only bring this up, not to tell the story, as much as say, of all the things we do, if any of you know veterans that might like their- The Library of Congress does not want these stories to be lost for posterity. They want them preserved, and we go, we come out, we put the whole thing on a disc, we provide it to the veteran, and not, this was a WWII veteran, it could be a veteran of anyone. It doesn't have to be a war hero, it just could be someone who wants to tell their story, and it will go and be saved in the Library of Congress. So, that was the one thing that wasn't covered in here, and we just, if you know someone and they'd like to have their story told, as a war veteran in the Library of Congress, we would be happy to come out and tell their story. And again, I thank you, Mayor, and Town Council for this.
Thank you very much, and thank you for bringing that aspect up, because clearly in our community, that is something that we very much can follow up on with you. So, thank you very much for both being here. Okay, we're going to move on to the next presentation, which is my presentation. And against my better judgment, I'm going to try this without my glasses, but I did print it out in large type. So, what I'm going to do is just give a kind of a state-of-the-town address right now, a review of what's happened in 2010 and what we can look forward to in 2011. Looking back on the year 2010, many significant town issues and events left lasting impressions on our community. The November elections, the evolution of our cultural arts program, the first full year of operations at our renovated community center and library, an agreement with the Napa Valley Unified School District to keep Yountville Elementary School open, neighborhood utility undergrounding, a new bike path, new businesses, and the list goes on. Despite these and other important topics we faced last year, one drew attention more than any other, the budget. Through prudent fiscal management and supported by a healthy economic base, we've been able to navigate an extremely challenging economy and maintain a high level of service to our residents, our businesses, and our visitors. Once again, we adopted a balanced budget, and we did so without use of the general fund reserve or cuts in vital services like we hear about every day in other communities across the state and across the country. We are one of a very short list of California communities able to increase our general fund and other reserves during these tough economic times. For example, for the first time, we created a $2 million drought reserve fund as insurance for our town water supply. Some of how we've been able to sustain our fiscal health has been through reductions of non-essential spending. We postponed or canceled plans in order to focus on core projects and services. Projects we did complete in 2010 include a $1.2 million wastewater treatment plant upgrade, expansion of our recycled water program, a new mile-long bicycle path that's the cornerstone of a 44-mile valley-wide pathway system. We upgraded our bus shelters, utility undergrounding in certain neighborhoods, and we worked on a town-wide beautification project. So many cities across this state would like to have achieved what our community has achieved, so let's not lose focus on that. In case we need a reminder, just listen to the comments on the streets or in businesses around town. When a visitor learns one of us actually lives here, so often they say, you're so lucky, or what a cute small town you have here. I wouldn't say it's because of luck, but we know what they mean, and they're right. We also reduced costs thanks to the cooperation of our town employees. We brokered a new two-tiered pension system that will save our town significant dollars over the coming years. That was combined with two years of no cost of living increases. They've really partnered with us to share in our sacrifices. Our town staff should be recognized for their outstanding achievements. The town received, for the first time, Achievements of Excellence Awards for our financial reporting in 2009 and for our operating budget in 2010, 11. Most of our capital improvement projects came in on time and on or under budget. We updated our town's financial software system to simplify and provide additional transparency of our town finances. We improved the design of our town website and made it more user-friendly. Those of you who interact with our team know firsthand their commitment to serving Yountville. You see it in their smiles behind the counter, friendly conversation while working in our parks and on our streets, and even when they're cleaning out storm drains and clearing debris in the middle of a winter storm. Another example of how our community answered the call to improve how we do business was the creation of the Napa Valley Tourism Improvement District. Our lodging industry took the lead to generate new revenues to promote and market Yountville and the Napa Valley as a whole. The voluntary self-assessment has led to more visitors to our town and more money for us to promote our community as a world-class destination. With close to 70% of our revenues, which means about $1.4 million, or $4.1 million, coming from visitors through the hotel and sales taxes they pay, we must continue cultivating that relationship while minimizing the impacts tourism has on our residents. Visitor dollars fund our infrastructure maintenance, our public safety, our parks, our streets, our recreation, our community. The property taxes we residents pay add up to about $1.2 million, which does not even cover our law enforcement and fire protection costs, not to mention other critical town services. In 2010, we also said thank you and job well done to two of our most committed public servants, former Mayor Cindy Saucerman and Councilmember Bill Dutton. Combined, they served our town for close to 20 years. Their stewardship and dedication to Yountville was instrumental in helping create the quality of living we enjoy and cherish today. While they have retired from their roles in the Town Council, they continue their public service and have left a lasting impression on our community. We embrace and engage the residents of our California Veterans Home and look for more ways to partner with our proud servicemen and women. We encourage interaction among the many generations that make up the fabric of Yountville through our library, recreational programming, and our businesses. Not long ago, the Pathway Home nonprofit organization was formed on the Veterans Home grounds to provide critical care for Iraq and Afghanistan veterans, our newest generation of warriors. We welcome each and every one of them and thank them, and we thank all of our military men and women for their service. Even more recently, we welcomed the Tug McGraw Foundation, who also shares space at the Veterans Home. They engaged some of our local talent to plant a brain garden, to promote healthy eating as part of their focus on brain research. I also want to acknowledge the many community volunteers that step up over and over again to share their time and skills. We see it in the art that hangs on the walls of the community center, we see it in our local service organizations, we also see it during our town and Chamber of Commerce events that showcase the extraordinary food and wine experience that we enjoy here in Yountville. Now, having looked back, we have so much to look forward to in 2011. We continue to see strong investment in our business community, as evidenced by the expansion and remodel of Hotel Yountville, and new small businesses coming online throughout town. The north end of town is experiencing its own revitalization, with changes to Washington Square in the form of R&amp;D Kitchen, new bike lanes along Madison Street, and a pledge to reopen the gas station. We also expect the much anticipated reopening of the former Gordon's Cafe Market later this year. Plans already are underway for our Second Annual Wellness Fair this fall to promote healthy living. We will grow our recreational services. Our cultural arts programs, which have added a distinct vitality to our town, will expand through our local artist galleries and outdoor sculpture art walk. We will engage local partners like the Lincoln Theater and the Napa Valley Museum to enhance our performing and cultural arts experience. We will continue to meet our affordable housing obligations through public and private development, like we've done this year with the 25 Arroyo Grande units on Fennel Road and the 25 additional units that are part of the Hotel Yountville expansion. We look forward to reopening the pedestrian pathway along Hopper Creek, adjacent to the historic oak tree, to safely and responsibly reconnect our beautiful townwide pathway system. We will maintain a high level of public safety protection through our CAL FIRE and Napa County Sheriff's Services. Especially given our demographics, we're extremely fortunate to have two fire companies with basic life support skills just moments away, and our sheriff's substation right in the middle of town helping keep us all safe. We will also face our challenges, like implementing rate adjustments to our water and wastewater operations to end the decade-long subsidy of those services. We also will continue to encourage and strive for a diverse and successful retail mix. We will continue to evaluate projects that we must do compared to what we would like to do. We will confront whatever fiscal conditions the state of California puts before us. Together, we will continue to make Yountville a special place to live and work. We will plan for the future, and we will continue to serve the Yountville community at the highest level. On behalf of your elected leadership, who all sit before you today, I thank you for the trust and support you've given each and every one of us to lead our community forward. Thank you. And with that, and I did make it through without my glasses, I welcome, I'll stop talking for a minute, and welcome our Parks and Community Services Commission annual report.
Good evening. Unfortunately, Eric Knight, who is the chair, could not be here this evening, he wasn't feeling well, so I'll go over the report shortly with you. I'm sure you've already read through it. The Parks and Community Services Commission was established in November of 2008 by Resolution of the Town Council. We have an eight-member board that consists of seven voting members and one non-voting student representative. In 2010, the Parks and Community Services Commission had several larger items on their agenda. The biggest was the dog park. And so, during that process, the commission held public meetings, toured possible sites, reviewed community feedback, they adopted decision-making criteria, and then they received direction from the council. They also conducted a park amenity review and discussion. That was shortly after I came here. We went through the town's park system virtually, in a virtual tour, and discussed what amenities were in which parks and where the commission saw there was room for improvement, and we are making recommendations in the upcoming CIP budget for those. We also, the commission reviewed a commercial use and wedding in parks policy, which was a piece that will come to the council for review as well. Before that came the just newly adopted this evening update to the Parks Ordinance. So, they reviewed information, we compared policies to other destination-type areas, and gave staff input and direction. They also review the Yountville Parks Recreation Area and Facility Naming and Dedication, so they reviewed the new policy, and they received the one applicant that we received in 2010 for the library reading room and made a recommendation to council on that. And they also reviewed the community center operations and marketing plan, which I'll be coming back to them again for review this month. And so, that concludes the report. I'm more than happy to answer questions or take your feedback to, back to the commission meeting, March 17th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions of council? No, thank you very much for presenting the report. We will move on right now to Item 8D, another presentation, this one by John Tuner, here as assessor, recorder, and county clerk.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, congratulations. For those of you I haven't seen since the election, I'll be sending you the bill for it shortly, so you don't have to pay that personally, it comes out of town funds. That's the extent of my comment on the last election. I am working with your town clerk, Michelle, to get you the bill as soon as we can. We're being very careful capturing all the costs that we had, doing a good job, we think, of allocating them fairly. As you know, you had Measure P, which raises your cost a little bit, and you had a number of candidates, so those costs will be passed on to you. If you collected candidates' fees, those will be offset by the costs we send you. So, you should have that bill, I hope, within the next two weeks.
Feel free to just take your time with that.
Well, I've got another of the up-valley communities that's really drilling at me to get their bill, so I'm glad that I don't have that kind of pressure here from Yountville. Let me put my assessor hat on a moment, and I want to echo what Mayor Dunbar said, not just congratulate this town on how well it's managed, but we were very fortunate in Napa County. We were one of only eight counties in the state of California that did not see an overall decline in their assessed value. Out of 58, one of eight. We weren't near the top, one county had a 4% increase, San Francisco, but we managed to eke out a 5, a 58/10,000th of a percent increase, which is $16 million on a 27-plus billion-dollar roll, but at least we were in positive territory. The reason for that is twofold. One, and I'll get into that in a minute specifically, the Yountville, we had a substantial amount of non-residential new construction, over $200 million county-wide, which helped to do that. And of course, that stuff that was in the pipeline from the boom that's getting finished now, we're not seeing those kinds of numbers on the horizon, so that was sort of a one-time thing. And I think the other thing that occurred was that we sort of hit the bottom of the housing market last year. We reduced 10,000 homes in 2010, in 2009, excuse me, because their value on the current market was less than their Proposition 13 base-year value. For 2010, we didn't raise anybody, but most of those homes did not get lowered any further. We think we pretty much, now of course, if you're following the news, the national housing market is still continuing to decline, but Napa County, because of the efforts you and all the other- all the other elected and appointed officials throughout the county have done, we're a very special place. We've maintained our quality of life, our environmental surroundings, and people are willing to pay money to come here, so we've done a good job of protecting the value of our property. So we were fortunate that we were not slammed, as many of my colleagues were across the state, with major declines in their overall assessed value. Now, moving to the town of Yountville, you also eked out an increase of 64/100 of 1%, which is not bad, I'm sorry, 84/100 of 1%. You and the City of American Canyon were the only two that had an increase. Even the City of St. Helena, for the first time, I guess, ever had a decrease in its assessed value. The American Canyon increase was a bounce back because of a single large warehouse that was completed. Otherwise, they would have been pretty much flat. They took the biggest hit. They were down 11.14% the year before in 2009, since almost 60% of their housing was in a decline in value status. It's nowhere near that for Yountville, thank goodness. You've been pretty well protected from that. We are, we did see some declines in value for some of your commercial properties, which have, were just completed, and in fact, one of the major new inns, we enrolled substantially less than they paid to build it, because we could not justify using their construction costs as what their current market value was, even when they were finished. So while that wasn't a decline in value, it was a recognition of the kind of economic environment we're in, and that will continue to be going forward. I asked before I came up this evening whether we had any major appeals from any of your larger commercial owners here in Yountville, and we may have a couple, so that could have an impact on your overall assessed value next year for the, when I release the 2010 figures for 2011 in July. So I don't see anything specific, but one of the reasons I come to speak to you every year is to sort of give you an idea of what I think may be happening. And I've been very conservative. If you look at the last five years, you've had a 10%, a 9%, a 10%, and a 7% increase, and then suddenly only .84%. The one offsetting factor this year that's going to be to everyone's advantage is that last year, for the first time since Proposition 13 passed, the inflationary adjustment that Proposition 13 requires not to exceed 2% was actually negative in 2009. The cost of living between October 2008 and October 2009 was negative. So that we actually took $100,000 home, if that was its value the year before, down to $99,753 in value. So that was a $47 million impact across the county, very small for a community like Yountville, but when you compare that to the normal $400 million increase we would have had, that's close to a half a billion dollars that was not on the roll. This year, we've already gotten the figure for the inflationary adjustment, and those of you who are under Prop 13, which is everybody, some people think it's only people who bought in 1975. That's not true. If you bought in 1985, you have a Proposition 13 base-year value, as you do if you bought in 2005. Unfortunately, your value is less than the 2005 base-year value, but we did see a 7/10 of 1% increase, which is the smallest increase we've had since 1978. All the others have been between 1 and 2%, which is the maximum. So let me just give you a couple of more numbers. Your declines in value, the overall assessment roll for the town of Yountville is just over a half a billion dollars, $506.8 million. And of that, $21.75 million was missing because of the declines in value. In other words, you would have had a $527 billion, a million-dollar roll instead of a $506 million. That represents 4.29% of your roll, and you rank second in the cities and towns. The only one who had less of an impact was the City of St. Helena, 2.73%. But American Canyon has almost a quarter of its value off the roll, and the City of Napa has 13% of its value off the roll. So you're still, as you said, Mayor Dunbar, very stable, very secure, very well-managed, and I don't see anything changing drastically, although I would not count on making a positive this year, even with the .7% of inflationary adjustment. The last thing I wanted to say was, last year, you had your third-highest increase in non-residential new construction since we started keeping the figures back in 1990. Your biggest, of course, was from 2008 to 2009, when two of the inns completed major construction. You had a $33 million increase that year. This year, you were still $10 million increase, and depending on the progress of the construction at the Yountville Hotel, you may see some increase, but that's probably not going to be in the same range that you've experienced over the last two years, which will contribute to whatever softness there's going to be in the assessed value numbers for you this coming year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on that, and then I have one other topic that Mr. Rogers asked me to cover, and I'll talk to you briefly about that.
I do have one question, but I'll ask first if any other council members have any questions. Councilmember Hall?
I do have one question, and maybe I'm just not quite, this is county tax and tax in general, so how is it the, how would the community center be treated from a property assessed value?
It is not assessed, because it belongs to the town of Yountville, just as Town Hall is not assessed. Anything the town owns. The only thing that is assessed, and it doesn't affect the town, just since you asked the question, I'll give you an answer probably more than you wanted to know. At the Veterans Home, they have a number of houses that staff live in, and those staff, I was just up meeting with Kathy Badzik, the interim deputy director, to explain the process to her. People living in those homes have exclusive use of nontaxable property. They pay rent, of course, but their rent is lower than it would be in the regular marketplace to attract people to come and work at the Veterans Home. So we assess them what's called a possessory interest tax. It's on their right to possess it, and they don't own the home, they can't sell it, but we do, and the tax runs about $1,000 a year for someone who has the use of the home, which is about $125, or about $80 a month. So it's like, and it's sort of like a small additional rent to make it, it's still not up to market levels, but that's the value of their possession, that's their personal one, and they pay that bill directly. You have no possessory interest that I know of in the town of Yountville, so you don't have anyone living or using town property that pays you a rent that would pay us a possessory interest tax.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
The one question I have, if you can, if you could comment on the conversations that are being had throughout the county about creating a subregion and sharing of housing units and allocation, is that something that factors into any of this at all?
Not at all. I pay a lot of attention to that, but no, that's outside of my area of expertise. That would be something that either Nancy Watt, the CEO, would be happy to invite to talk to you, or Hillary Gittleman, or even better, perhaps Larry Florin, who is our CIA Director, that's Community and Intergovernmental Affairs. We don't have a spy section in the county. But Larry's right up on that and tracking all that legislation. So Napa and, City of Napa, the County of Napa and the City of American Canyon have had agreements to share some of that housing burden, where the counties agreed to contribute money towards affordable housing in those communities out of funds that they get from developers that build in the unincorporated area. But I don't think that's expanded Up Valley yet, although it may make in this new program that you're talking about, but other than that, that's not my bailiwick.
Okay.
Okay. Then the last thing I wanted to talk about at Mr. Rogers's request, and I'll be talking to the town managers and the city managers on the 11th of March when they get together, and I think some people from Lake County come down, as I understand, is redistricting. Now, I'm the registrar of voters, but I've been hired, so to speak, by the Board of Supervisors to assist them in redistricting the supervisory districts, which must be done every 10 years, just as Congress redistricts and the State Assembly and the State Senate. Local supervisors, anyone who's elected by district, you're elected at large, so you don't have to worry about redistricting. But anyone who's elected by district is subject to the one-person, one-vote rule that the Supreme Court passed down in Baker v. Carr, which says you must have essentially equal districts in population. And so, as you can imagine, the City of American Canyon has grown rapidly, so between 2000, when I did the last redistricting for the Board of Supervisors, the City of American Canyon has absorbed about 70% of the growth that's happened in Napa County in the last decade, including all the other towns and cities. They've gotten most of the growth because of the huge amount of development they've had over the past 10 years. So what's going to happen is Keith Caldwell, who is the supervisor from that district, now is representing too many people compared to his colleagues, since we haven't redistricted for 10 years. So just picking a number, and this isn't exact, Keith may have 20,000 people in his district, where Bill Dodd only has 14,000 people in his district, and therefore, the people in Keith's district influence is diluted as opposed to Bill Dodd's district. So that's what redistricting in a nutshell is all about. So one of the reasons that is being, that I was asked to come tonight, is that the town of Yountville, because the fifth district has grown so much in population, it's going to have to shrink in size in order to get fewer people inside the district, and that means that the third district, which is Supervisor Dillon's district, which has probably grown the least in the last 10 years, is going to have to grow in size. And for the first time in 2000, Supervisor Dillon, actually, her district, she wasn't the supervisor at the time, her district expanded for the first time into the City of Napa, the third district, the Up Valley District, had never reached the City of Napa. So this time, I think Supervisor Lewis, who represents the town of Yountville, Supervisor Dodd, Supervisor Wagon Connect, and Supervisor Dillon are all going to grow their districts a little bit. I don't think any of them have grown enough to stay the same size, where the smaller districts in population would have to grow larger. So I just wanted to clarify that this decision is made by the Board. The American tradition passed down by the founding parents is that legislators are to set their own districts. That's changed in California, of course, with the new Citizens Redistricting Commission, but throughout the rest of the United States, with, I think, only one other exception, the legislature sets its own boundaries for itself, which has led to some of the reasons that we have a Citizens Redistricting Commission here in California. But the Board of Supervisors has final authority, and as long as they can get three votes for a plan, that's what's going to happen. So whether Yountville were to change districts, your population would about make up some of the difference that would happen in American Canyon, and all of those questions will not be decided by me, they'll be decided by the Board, and my job is going to be to bring a couple of scenarios to the Board, which will be open to the public and presented to the public. I'll be happy to come here when I have the scenarios ready, which should be in late May or early June. And one of those scenarios may move Yountville into the third district, it may not. That was discussed briefly back in 2000, and the decision was made that we didn't need to make any kinds of those major changes. I'm not sure we do this time until I see the numbers. So I can inform Michelle and Steve of what the numbers are as soon as I have them. What I do is I make up a PowerPoint presentation showing the existing numbers from 2000 and the current numbers, and that gives you an idea of who has to shift and how much in terms of gaining population. That process must be complete by the 1st of November of 2011. I'm hoping we'll have it done earlier than that, because the candidates for supervisor in 2012 begin filing on December 30th, so they have to know what district they're filing in, and they won't know what district it is until the Board adopts those districts. So that's the process, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
One question I'll start with is, do you redistrict entire communities other than something like the City of Napa or maybe American Canyon? If Supervisor Caldwell's population number needs to be lower than the population of one entire city, do you segment that? Or, I guess more specifically, would Yountville either stay wholly in one district or wholly move to another, not split the community?
Yes. That doesn't have to be, but there are federal guidelines that are passed down. In addition to equal population, you have to recognize communities, and you have to be careful not to either dilute the vote of minorities. You're allowed, in some cases, to increase the vote, voting power of minorities by making a minority-majority district, which I don't think we're going to be facing in Napa County. But no, my goal, and I would strongly advise the Board, that you don't divide communities. Now, of course, the City of Napa has too many people for four districts, so it has to be divided into districts, and there's no counterpart to that. But the idea of splitting American Canyon, as long as the population of American Canyon fits in one district, won't happen, and as far as I'm concerned, that won't happen. Yountville makes no sense of any kind. In some ways, you might want it, because you have two supervisors representing you and therefore have two fifths of the Board instead of just one-fifth of the Board, but it doesn't really make any sense from both the legal requirements nor from just good government practices.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I do have a question, please.
Yes.
That is, is there any consideration given to geographical contig, you know?
Contiguity, yes, very much so. We don't do the lizard-shaped districts that you see in some parts of Texas, where they've taken a Republican area, we don't pay any attention to party anyway, because we're all nonpartisan, but in Texas, that's where gerrymandering came from, that word. There's a district that really looks like a lizard, because it follows a Republican neighborhoods. We're not going to do that here. We have very compact districts. One thing that, since you raised that point, I'm going to be urging the Board to allow the district boundary to follow school district boundaries. We currently have some school district boundaries that don't match Board of Supervisor boundaries. Of course, Yountville's all in the Napa Valley Unified School District, so that's not an issue, as the City of Napa's all in its school district, and that's the same is true for Calistoga and American Canyon and St. Helena. But out in the outlying areas, it may shift some boundaries around a little bit, because currently, the supervisor boundary has some people in the city, in the St. Helena Unified School District, in the district, and other people in the Napa, and that can lead to problems where people get the wrong ballot, so I'm going to try and get that straightened out. But no, geographical contiguity is very much what the law looks to. You want as compact a district as possible.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
And I'd be happy if you'd like me to, when we get to the scenarios, I can arrange with Steve and Michelle to come up and give you the presentation. We can, I'll call it a public hearing, if you don't mind, with your invitation, and then the public can be invited to see, and if there are people in the community who are concerned about whether Yountville switches districts, they could give some input to me. I then carry that to the Board. The Board makes the final decision.
Yeah, it's just so our public is aware of that process, it'd be key to know to whom they need to be speaking in the meantime, before the decision is coming up.
That's right, and that is to the people who will make the decision, who are the supervisors.
Very good.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Not at all, anytime.
And thank you, Steve, for adding that to Mr. Tuner's presentation tonight. Item nine, public hearings. It looks like we have none on tonight's agenda, so we will move on to item 10, administrative regular items. 10A, adoption of resolution amending the town's check reporting process.
Mayor, council, thank you. This is presenting a recommendation to change what has been a longstanding practice of holding vendor checks for release until they've been placed on consent calendar and approved by the town council. And that's the way that the process has been for as long as I could research back. And with the implementation of our new software, we've been working very diligently to modernize some of our business practices and to try to improve our internal processing procedures. And when we looked at our check process, we do feel it is outdated, and it's not very much in keeping with modern business practices, and it's never a good policy to hold checks, whether they're to be taken to the bank or issued out to vendors who are expecting them. In researching this issue, we found nothing in the municipal code that required us to follow this procedure, and there are two government code sections which do reference warrants and And there are two government code sections which do reference warrants and checks paid by government entities. And they're cited in the report. And section 37208B refers to if a body has approved a budget by ordinance or resolution, that there's no need for that body to audit the checks prior to payment. And we do adopt our budget. And it's important also to recognize that internally, we have very good controls over our expenses. We have purchasing policies and procedures that are followed, and we have approvals on each invoice that comes through for payment. And I also review all of the payments before the checks are finalized, to look at account codes and to be sure that they're approved by the people who received the goods and services so that they have been verified. The other government code section, 37208C, refers to payments being approved per a district or agency's CAFR. And we do have our comprehensive annual financial report that has been published each year by December and is presented to the council for their review and acceptance. So review of our process is meeting these requirements without continuing our current procedure. So what we are proposing is that we change our procedure so that we can have a more routine check run and not place it on the consent calendar for approval before we release the checks. Now, what we'd really like to do is do a paperless process and still, in the interest of transparency and making information available, to post a monthly check register on the town's website under the Finance Department webpage. Recognizing that we may not be quite ready to go paperless, another option would be to include it as a consent calendar item with the monthly financial report for information, if that is a better process. So that kind of summarizes the issue, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Councilmember Mueller?
You just said that we may not be ready to go paperless. Is that technically or emotionally speaking?
No, I, I'm meaning if the council's not ready for a paperless process.
Okay.
That, that is what we're recommending.
Okay, great.
We're ready.
Any other questions? I will offer an opportunity for the public to comment on this topic if you'd like. Are you good? You're good. All right. So we'll just continue forward. How would people like to proceed? Is there comments? Vice Mayor?
First of all, anytime we can update our business practices to more modern standards, I am in favor. I have to say that I always thought, when I first came on the council, and my father is a CPA, which I'm not, and he said, he said to me, because he was going through one of the agendas, and he said, "It's very strange that you guys approved the checks because there's really no way that you would actually know whether or not an item is proper unless you went back to every check and then went through the whole process. You better have just good processes and, and make sure those are in place." And it also gives that appearance. I think that somehow this gives a higher level of, of assurance, which in my opinion it really doesn't. So I absolutely support doing this. I would say, I do think for transparency purposes, it's, it's good for people to be able to see who we're paying and who we're doing business with. So I would put it on the website once a month, and that's it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Hall, you're not going to have a comment on this issue, please.
My only comment is that transparency is obviously critical. We get to see every period or two when we see the checks being run, but we still have no idea of if they're really valid, and then we trust that they've gone through the internal procedure or the procedure that's set out in place. So there's really, this is a, this is smart, it makes sense, it's business efficient. I, I would make the motion to approve it, assuming, assuming that there is consensus among the council, no more discussion.
I'll second it if there's no more discussion.
We have a motion and a second, then. Is there any additional discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposition. There we go. Thank you for bringing that forward. Move on to item 11, staff informational reports. Do we have some? Any?
I think the, the only non-written informational item I'll share with everybody is that the internal renovation project for town council, or town hall continues on track and on budget. If you look up today, you'll note that the replacement ceiling tiles are in place in this particular phase, and that carpet goes in in the area, and we should be pretty much wrapped up by the end of next week and then be able to fully move people back into all of the spaces. So that project's moving forward.
Very good. We'll move on then to item 12, council member meeting reports and comments. We'll start with meeting reports. And I will start with the Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. We did meet today. It was a very concise meeting. We got an update on the Napa River Bridge project. It is several weeks behind schedule due to contamination of water and soil. And they're hoping now for, well, I think they're about, they said about twelve weeks behind schedule. So that's also impacted some of the street closures they have going on down in Napa. So that's just kind of a informational on, mostly to deal with the folks that are downtown Napa. That's really been a moving target for them, unfortunately, because of what they, the surprises they found in the soil and the water down there. They were denied a federal grant request by the National Secretary of the Army. This is kind of that dance they continue to do in, in Washington, going for federal dollars to continue the, the flood project. And they have to continue to keep asking. Sometimes they're successful, sometimes they're not. So they just keep, that's kind of a moving target for them as well. That was, those were some of the highlights, other than rescheduling next month's meeting. I will move on then to the Napa County Transportation and Planning Agency meeting that both Vice Mayor Chilton and I attended. A couple highlights. One I will mention, the agency approved the replacement of the Yountville trolley, which will be, I don't remember a timeline, I don't know if we have that, but as it is being phased out because it's getting kind of long in the tooth, they did approve that trolley replacement for us, which is, which is a very good thing. There is also, you may have read in the newspapers, an adjustment to the agricultural worker van pool program. There are ten vans that were provided by a federal grant, and they're being grossly underutilized by lack of interest in the public sector. So they're, that grant funding runs out at the end of June, I think, or the beginning of June. And we're looking at ways to either completely eliminate the program, modify it, and sell off the assets of the unused vehicles or some combination thereof. Let's see. There's still that ongoing, and maybe you, you might want to touch on this ongoing conversation about the Napa County Commission for the Arts and Culture versus the Arts Council. Do you have any follow-up to that?
Well, on the Arts Commission specifically, that was not expected to be an agenda item. They, they essentially did a report, and I, I got the feeling that the Arts Commission and Arts Council Napa Valley are going to get together before the next meeting in, in mid-March and talk about the future of, of the Arts Commission. It did bring up, it's, it's funny how things seem to go back and forth and back and forth, but the topic of the role of NCTPA as a transit agency and/or a county-wide planning agency seemed to really resurface in this concept of, does Napa County need a council of governments type structure? There are some who are very, very strongly in favor of that, and others of us, at least the question of, does it belong to a transit agency or is it necessary at all? So that seemed to rear its head again. I'm not sure if it will be a one-time shot and we'll just sort of go on, but I was surprised when that, that kind of popped up. So we'll see what happens next month, and we'll report on that.
I'm afraid you'll be there without me that time. Let's move on to Napa River Watershed Information Center report.
Actually, thank you, Mayor DeMar. This meeting is scheduled for March 24th. So it's, I, I think I maybe misreported, it was February 24th. I'll tell you, showing up down there on February 24th was quite an adventure. So now I know that it's every other month. I actually didn't go, I confirmed. But it's March 24th. That being said, I have had email correspondence with Patrick Rowe, who is the chairperson of the commission, Lone, pardon me, I always get it backwards, his middle name. Nonetheless, I've had relationship with him when I was on the WIC committee before as a president of Wildlife Rescue Center. So we're going to try to connect before the next meeting, just to do the meet and greet. They are hosting or trying to set up their symposium. They'd like to use the Yountville Community Center. I've, I mentioned that, I think, in the last meeting. I think they may have sent an application, so I trust that we'll be forthcoming in providing the space. And other than that, I look forward to having the presentation after the, the 24th meeting, and I'll have more to report.
Thank you. Are there other council meeting reports at this time? One other meeting report I will give then, before we have council comments, is I attended the North Bay Division of the League of California Cities Membership Meeting in a very rainy, stormy Santa Rosa on the February 24th, as you mentioned. And our guest speaker was a city manager from the city of Burlingame, Jim Mantel, who spoke on the issue of consolidation of services and reforming governance structures. They have done some consolidations in their area, and he was speaking to us on the pros and cons as we consider reviewing and potential adjustments to how we all do business. One of the highlights that he was focusing on, well, a couple of them, examples of shared park and recreational services between communities, web management, dispatch, you know, public safety dispatch, things like that, where in the past, the thinking has always been each city and town does everything for itself. And now the, the concept is maybe looking out, branching out where we can save money, save duplication of effort to streamline our, our services. So that's going to be an ongoing topic of conversation, I suspect, but that was our North Bay Division meeting. So with that, any comments that council would like to make this evening?
If I may, there was a library ad hoc committee member.
Oh, Councilmember Mueller, or Councilmember Dornbecker?
Well, we both attended, but since I, that was the first meeting that I had attended, I'll defer to Councilmember Mueller.
What we, we met last Friday, if I'm not mistaken, and we are currently reviewing a draft lease agreement that, been going back and forth with several iterations. So it certainly isn't final right now, but the, the main thrust of the agreement is a negotiation that we will get some number of library hours in lieu of a zero lease payment from the county. But there, the, the major thing that I think will please the rest of council members if it does get signed, and we'll be reviewing that draft agreement before signature, is that correct, Steve, in March? So we'll all have a time to look at it before anything really happens, is a lump sum payment for infrastructure that the county will be providing for its space that will apply to the whole community center. So we'll be talking about that November, March 15th.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any comments from the council?
I just wanted to remind everyone of the Taste of Yountville, which I believe is coming up on the March 19th. And once again, we will be counting on all of our wonderful volunteers in the community to come out and help. And I expect it'll be a, a great time. All the rain's going to be gone by then, and it's going to be a beautiful day. So come on out and have fun with us.
Thank you for that reminder. I believe eleven to five o'clock.
Eleven to five.
Is someone going to, the red and white, I think, is coming up before our next meeting.
That's right.
I'm feeling the Vice Mayor might be bringing that up. Comments, Vice Mayor?
A couple. First, I've, I'm going to ask a question. I apologize for not asking this before the meeting, but I'll talk about the red and white and give you a chance to think about it. Can you address the opening of the path with the, behind us here with the tree work? That question was asked of me by a resident.
It's a very easy one, so when you're done promoting, I'll come back.
The red and white, which is the annual fundraiser primarily for the Yountville PTA for educational programs at the school, is on March the 12th at 6:00 PM at Silverado Vineyards. You can buy tickets online at yes, Y-E-S-P-T-A dot com. Or you can go just to the school office on Monday through Friday, although not this Friday because there's no school again for the third week in a row. It's a four-day week. But, that is true, thank you. We'll get to that. My panic from yesterday has now been alleviated. So that occurs, and it's a very important fundraiser, so if you can attend, there will also be some items there that are sponsored by the Yountville School Foundation, and the funds from that will specifically go to saving the school. And as Samantha pointed out, the after-school program had originally planned on a, I believe, a trip to, was it Tahoe? That was a snow trip that was canceled. I'm not sure of lack of snow or lack of participation, probably the latter. But there will be after-school program during the whole non-school day on Friday, which my children and I know several other parents who will be there, so thank you. And then another comment real quick. A very nice lady, if you're in town, from Wildlife Rescue came around recently. They're doing a, a donation drive to establish, I think it's a temporary or temporary for now, sent her over on the county land next to Recto Reservoir, I think in Corpierd. She kind of gave me the history of, of Wildlife Rescue and talked about some enterprising folks to make things happen. I know Councilmember Hall was very involved with that in the future. So anyway, if you hear about that, your support on that would be appreciated.
That was Debbie Welborn.
It was Debbie, yes. And if you could just comment on the timeline for reopening the path, that question has come up.
Thank you, Mayor. We are finalizing the RFP for the tree trimming services, and as soon as that's concluded, the other signage has already been approved and reviewed by legal counsel and ParsAC, so it's simply a matter, the RFP was let for the, or, excuse me, so I'll let, Graham, you want to talk about the exact date? But it will be imminent, just, we have to get the Ps and Qs done on getting the work done following our bid procedures.
Right, the RFP was sent to six contractors, and bids open on Friday. So then we'll do a construction purchase order with the parent low bidder, have to review the contract, and then get that out. So usually it takes a few weeks for them to get it mobilized, get it done. I believe there's over twenty trees that are going to be trimmed as part of this project. The gate has been purchased, it's being constructed, and hopefully it'll be here by April, and then they'll install that and get the path back open. So we're hoping by April.
The, the key work is the tree trimming. The pathway can't open without the gates. The gates are a additional security, safety measure, but not required.
They can open?
They can.
Okay.
The gates, if you remember, the gate design that we went with is very similar to a state park or national park, and the signage on it will basically tell somebody, you know, "We've closed the path. There's a safety reason we closed the path. You know, you shouldn't, but if you do, it's up to you." And then the additional signage that we reviewed with you is going up on a number of our public pathways, just to remind people that, you know, there is an inherent safety risk, and people need to take some personal responsibility when they walk on our natural path pedestrian because, path systems, because they are exposed to weather conditions. You know, we've seen some frosty ice buildup, things like that, limbs, trees, rocks, little varmints. So it's, it's, you know, it's not a pristine path, though, you know, the signage politely reminds people to keep attentive eye around what they're doing around them. And unfortunately, that's what the legally we're required to do now, to protect ourselves as much as we can from somebody's inattentiveness.
So one other question I'd like for either of you to answer. Do we have any fish and game access restrictions that will affect that timing? Or?
No.
The trimming itself and, and the deconstruction and reconstruction of the barriers, none of that impacts the?
Yeah, the contractor won't be getting Yeah, the contractor won't be getting into the creek or working on the creek banks. They were, in the RFP, we told them they had to stay out of the creek.
In case any members of the public are concerned about that.
I mean, this is all trees that are above, you know, and basically, I should point out that, as Public Works Director Rosworth mentioned, it's trimming, not removal. All of this is work is to basically improve the canopy and the overall safety and the nature of the way some of the limbs move 40 to 60 feet, in some cases from where the base of the tree is, all along that whole riparian corridor section.
And is there a notification or plan in place for all the Hopper Creek condo residents?
Yes, we actually have a communication system, and, and once we know the actual date or dates that the tree trimmers will be there, we will identify the property manager and also Mr. Carl Nitka, who does their coordination, so, and we'll put signs up once we know, because there are some additional, you know, part of the open path segments are also subject to our, our tree trimming program, so the day or days that the tree trimming company is out there, the path access will be closed for obvious safety reasons while their equipment is out on the path.
Can you, Councilmember Mueller?
One more question. Do we need any more council discussion or paperwork to make this happen?
Nope, you've given us all the direction and the budget authority, as long as our quotes don't exceed our budget authority.
So no other previous council decisions are affected? Okay.
You've, you've done, you know, we're doing the implementation follow-through based on the direction that you provided, and I know some people think it should have been like a simple thing, we go out the next day, but unfortunately, given our, the number of heritage trees, we actually had to have the heritage trees evaluated, a trimming management plan approved by the town arborist, and then a man, you know, a tree trimming program. We've had communications with the president of Hopper Creek Condo Association to consult with them, and then we did a formal RFP to ensure that we're meeting our purchasing requirements, and, and that's what Mr. Watson was referring to, that will open on Friday, and our hope is that, you know, the contractor will get the Ps and Qs together with the insurance language and execute the contract. We get a date, and, you know, we could be in business in two, two and a half weeks.
What I would just request, if it's possible, to reconnect with the citizens that volunteered to be on our ad hoc Heritage Tree Committee that went through this whole process, so that we can let them know how this is moving forward in case they want to make comments or just be informed. We're not looking to reconvene that committee necessarily.
I think we can inform them, and I do want to point out that nothing is happening to negatively adverse the heritage oak. In fact, most of the trimming has nothing to do with the quote heritage oak, it's adjacent trees and, and stuff, but I certainly think, I'm trying to figure out where that database resides in my, but I, I certainly think we can, we can get a notice out, and also we'll make sure that we, we get a story out on the town website and a press release to The Sun to let people know. Again, the emphasis here that everybody needs to be focused on is that it's tree trimming, vegetation management along a wide section of the path with the goal and focus on the path reopening all the way through in a safe, responsible manner.
Yeah, let's just try to minimize, I know you will, try to minimize any surprises people might, or misunderstandings they may have with what's going on, so, thank you very much. Let's, with that, move on to item 13, future agenda items. It looks like we're once again going to welcome an update from Representative of the Veterans Home Allied Council, as we have just established that we're going to do that on a regular monthly basis, and also an introduction of ordinance amending municipal code zoning ordinance section may or may not be on that next agenda.
That will probably move to the April 5th agenda.
Okay, fair enough. Closed session, do we have a need for closed session? We have a couple items listed, as stated here on the agenda, so if there's nothing else...
We do have one closed session item.
One closed session item, okay. Nothing else, we will adjourn to that closed session.